I just wanted to let you know that I'm recording.
Okay, thanks Bonnie.
And just a reminder if everyone can mute their microphones until it's time to speak, that will help reduce feedback during the meeting.
Amanda and Bonnie, are you guys ready to go right at 4:30?
I believe we are ready whenever 4:30 hits. I think we've got a quorum now.
Okay, I will wait till 4:30 and get started.
Hey guys.
All right, we're at 4:30. So, good afternoon. This is Michael Marks, Chair of the Apex Planning Board. Attendance at today's meeting will be taken by roll call. So when I say your name to the planning board members, please respond. So Michael Marks is here. Beth Godfrey. Okay, Beth is not here. Reggie Skinner.
Present.
Mark Steele.
Here.
Tina Sherman.
Here.
Tommy Pate.
Here.
Tim Royal.
Here.
Keith Braswell.
Here.
Good. So I hope all board members, staff and their family are safe and surviving in these trying times. Before I review how this meeting is going to start, I would like to ask Reggie Skinner to provide our invocation, please. Reggie?
Oh, let's go ahead and bow our heads. Brother God, we thank you for another day. We thank you for this opportunity to serve the town of Apex and the residents of Apex. Give us the wisdom to make decisions that will benefit the town and its residents. We ask you to stay in your name.
And in tradition, let's please rise for the saying of the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic which stands one nation, under God. Thank you. All right, so for anyone who can join on the phone today, today's meeting presentation is posted on the Planning Board page of the town website. And if you want to follow along, the website is www.apexnc.org/182. And you should be able to get the, all the presentation that the staff will present today. As a reminder, members of the public who have called in today are in listen-only mode. All participants will be muted initially. Roll call for all voting on action items will be conducted by calling out the name of each planning board member. Presenters will indicate when they are advancing the slides to allow the audience to follow along on the presentations that are available online. To ask a question or make a comment, you can click to unmute yourself. Please remember to mute yourself once you're done speaking so we avoid any background noise. If there are disruptions that occur via the video feed, audio, or phone staff, or phone staff will mute all. And at my direction of the chair, any attendees with disruptive audio will also be muted by the staff. So to the planning board members, while the presentations are occurring, we will mute all lines except the presenter to help with the audio quality. When we get to questions and discussion points, I will indicate that the floor is open for any comments and discussion. At any time, you can raise your hand if you have your video turned on. Or unmute yourself to ask a question or make a comment. The chat box should not be used to discuss any item during the meeting, but may be used to note any technical difficulties so the staff can assist you. When you do speak, speak, please state your name when you unmute so that we can, before you make any comments or ask a question so that the group knows who is speaking and the amendments can be documented correctly. If a voting member of the board logs off, we will pause briefly to allow time for them to reconnect. And this will allow to avoid having to repeat any information. And as a reminder, as we discussed at the last meeting, we will not vote on any public hearing agenda items today. We will have discussions on each public hearing and reconvene on Wednesday, this coming Wednesday, September 16th at 5:00 PM to listen to any public comments received between now and Tuesday evening. At that time, we will have further discussion, possible motion, and vote on each public hearing agenda item. A message to the public attendees who are listening. Public comments received by email and voicemail by noon on Friday, September 11th, the business day before the meeting. Comments will be read into the record during the appropriate time during this meeting and full copies will be attached to the meeting minutes. Since this meeting is being held remotely, public comments on public hearing items will be received until 24 hours after the end of this meeting. Any additional comments received will be read into the record during the September 16th Planning Board meeting when we will vote on the public hearing items. If you miss the Planning Board comment deadline, you can still use the same email and voicemail number to provide comments to the Town Council up until noon on Monday, October 5th. So we'll get started. Diane, do you have any items of information for this meeting?
Yes, I do. I wanted to give you a final update on the census. Remind the public that you have until September 30th to fill out your census form if you haven't done so already. So for Apex, the self-response rate today is 75.4%, which does beat the self-response rate from 2010. We don't have our group quarters and special populations added in there. We're hoping that that will get us to where our goal was at 82%. But we have to wait till later this year to find out if that happened. The North Carolina self-response rate is only 61.8%. So if anyone has friends and family outside of Wake County, please, please, please ask them if they've done their census because we've only got a couple of weeks left. So that was it.
Okay, thanks Diane. Now we'll have the public comment period for any non-public hearing items, including new business items that appear in this agenda. So staff, do we have any public comments for the public comment period?
No, there was none received.
Okay, all right. So now we'll go to consent item number one. And this item we will vote on. So this is to approve the meeting minutes from the July 13th regular meeting with corrections for the motions and seconds on case 20CZ01, the depot 499. So any other additional comments on? So if we, so I need somebody to make a motion in a second. Please state your name when you make that motion. Do I have a motion?
This is Mark Steele. I move that we adopt the minutes from, the revised minutes from the July 13th regular meeting.
Okay, I have a motion from Mark. Do I have a second?
This is Reggie Skinner. I have a second.
Okay. Motion in a second. All those in favor, I will do a roll call again. Michael Marks, yes. Beth Godfrey? Reggie Skinner?
Yes.
Mark Steele?
Yes.
Tina?
Yes.
Tommy, are you going to be on mute?
Oh, I'm sorry. I wasn't at the meeting actually, so I, did I still vote on this one?
Well, if you read the minutes and.
I did read them. Okay, I said yes then.
Can you maybe unmute?
Can you hear me?
Yeah, I can now, yes.
Okay, sorry. Yeah, I say yes, I read the meeting minutes.
Okay, all right. Keith Braswell? Keith, I think you're on mute if you're trying to get in. All right, I'm not hearing anything from Keith, but we still have, I guess. We still have six yeses, so the motion does pass. We'll move on to consent item number two, the meeting minutes from the August 10th 2020 meeting. I assume everybody has read those. Once again, I need a motion if we agree that the meeting minutes were correct.
This is Tina. I move to approve the minutes.
Okay, thanks Tina. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
This is Mark. I second Tina's motion.
Okay, thank you, Mark. So we have a motion by Tina, a second by Mark. Throw down, roll call again. Michael Marks, yes. Beth Godfrey? Reggie Skinner?
Yes.
Mark Steele?
Yes.
Tina Sherman?
Yes.
Tommy Pate?
Yes.
Tim Royal?
Yes.
Keith Braswell? Motion passes again. Six votes to and no nays. So at this time, Shannon Cox, our long-range planning manager, will present an affordable housing plan update. So Shannon, it's all yours.
Okay, thank you. I am going to share my screen. And are you able to see the Affordable Housing Plan opening slide?
Yes, it does.
Okay, great. Thank you. And for those who might be following along, I am on slide number three. So the first item today is an update on the Town of Apex Affordable Housing Plan. And on slide four, I'm noting that while I'm delivering the presentation to you today, we do have an expert consultant, HRNA, helping us through this effort. They are an economic development, real estate, and public policy firm. They also developed the Affordable Housing Plan for Wake County and they're working with Town of Cary. So they are very familiar with our area resources and trends. And on slide five, this is an overview of what I will cover this afternoon. I'll briefly describe the planning process, share some of the preliminary findings, and then go over what you can expect next. And on slide six, you can see, this is just a snapshot of the, both the process and the schedule. So we're working hard to deliver the Affordable Housing Plan in an eight-month timeframe. We kicked off the planning process in May and the first several months are really focused on a housing needs assessment. And that's what I'll be presenting to you today. We're just at the point where we will be kind of turning our focus from the needs assessment to developing recommendations and tools. And we will begin kind of simultaneously working on drafting the plan. The draft recommendations will be presented to the public as well as the planning board and Town Council. And then we will be coming back to you in a public hearing setting at the end of this year to consider adoption. There are stakeholder engagement planned throughout this process. I'll be getting into a little bit more detail about what we've done so far as we walk through this presentation. But I did want to note that we have a steering committee working with us throughout the planning process. It's a robust group with representation from the planning board. Mr. Steele is on the steering committee as well as Town Council. We have several citizen representatives, nonprofits, developers, representatives from Wake County and Town of Cary. So this is a group working with us throughout this process. On slide seven, this is just, you know, a brief overview of what goes into affordable housing. A lot of people have the misconception that when we're talking about affordable housing, we're talking just about subsidized public housing, which is a part of the picture, but not the full picture. So some of the issues that are related to the Affordable Housing Plan are looking at our supply and diversity of housing, rental affordability, what services we have in place, opportunities to age in place, issues like gentrification, and racial equity. So all of these things are part of the discussion when we're talking about affordable housing. Remind myself not to use the arrows, they don't work. So moving on to slide eight, just a title slide, preliminary findings. And then slide nine. As I said, we've started going through the first phase of public engagement. And that really consisted mainly of an online survey. We worked really hard to get the word out for this survey. We had information on the town's website and social media. We did utility bill mailers, put flyers at apartment complexes, grocery stores, bus stops, worked with Wake County Public School System to have information with the food distribution that's been going on. We did targeted outreach to churches and nonprofits. So with the help of our steering committee, really made a dedicated effort to reach people, to let them know that this survey was happening. And we did have 1,200 participants. So we felt like that was really great participation at this first stage of the Affordable Housing Plan. And so we're working through the feedback that we received. There's a broad range of sentiments in the survey results. We had over 2,000 written comments, so we're really diving into those details of what's been shared with us. HRNA, our consultants, also conducted 10 interviews with developers and service providers and realtors to gain some insights about the housing market here. And then they spoke with seven individuals who've personally experienced housing issues. So slide 10, some of the issues that we've heard, and this is just kind of the, a sneak peek into the issues that we've heard as we continue to work through the survey results, are on the screen here. We're hearing questions about whether people who work in Apex can actually afford to live here. We've heard comments that young people aren't choosing to live in Apex. Housing diversity has been a concern, especially with a lot of comments about too many large, single-family homes and not enough small, single-family homes. There's been comments about the need for transit and affordable housing near transit. And kind of an underlying current of how can Apex be a welcoming community for all? And how is the Affordable Housing Plan going to be a part of that? So those are the types of things that we've heard. Moving on to slide 10. So the other part of this first phase of work is kind of diving into the data. So there's a public input component and then a data analysis component. And, you know, no surprise here, the American Community Survey data confirms Apex is growing quickly. And actually, our population growth since 2010 has been 40% compared to 23% for Wake County overall. And on slide 12, this is showing that while population has grown for many, many groups, primarily our population growth has been white, affluent, and highly educated people. So if you look at the graph on the left there, it's showing that 72% of new Apex residents since 2010 are white. And that's compared to 47% of new Wake County residents. The difference between the county growth and Apex growth as far as educational attainment is not as drastic. Both Wake County and Apex are attracting, you know, highly educated people with 72% of Apex, new Apex residents having a bachelor's degree or higher. On slide 13, this data is showing us that we are losing moderate-income households, particularly among homeowners, and we're gaining higher-income renters and homeowners. So on the left there, we're looking at change in income distribution among renters. And you can see that we've gained about 1,200 households earning above $75,000. On the right-hand side, it's showing change in income distribution among homeowners. And we've actually had increases in all household income groups except for that $50,000 to $75,000 household income where we've lost over 600 households. A few more comments on slide 14 from the public engagement process, just to kind of provide some opinions and perspectives that aren't fully captured through the data. We have heard concern about the cost of housing for single parents, for people who are approaching retirement. There's been sentiments about making sure that people who are serving Apex, such as teachers, can afford to live here. There's been comments about, you know, different housing sizes, being able to start purchasing a home in Apex. But then we've also heard that some people don't think that we have a housing issue in Apex and they appreciate that their housing, their home value has gone up and would like to continue to see it go up. Moving on to slide 15. This is showing that the entry point for purchasing, purchasing a home has gone up. So the solid light blue line is the entry point for purchase, whereas the dark blue line is showing over time, the increase in the median household value. And these dash lines are comparing the numbers to Wake County. So you can see that both the entry point and the median household value in Apex are higher than Wake County overall. On slide 16, it's noted that if these trends continue, households earning less than $100,000 per year will have limited access to homeownership in Apex. So in 2018, the household income needed to purchase a median home was $94,000. And you can see that since 2011, that's been steadily increasing. Slide 17 is showing us a little bit about the rental housing gap. And in particular, where we do not have enough rental units is where that rent is less than $1,000. And that's especially important for households earning less than $40,000. And if you look at slide 18, over the next 10 years, that gap is projected to double because we're expecting to both lose naturally occurring affordable units and demand is expected to increase. So we're looking at a potential gap of 2,000 units by 2030 for that lower-income rental bracket. And if you look at slide 19, over the next 10 years, we are projected to add close to 2,000 jobs with incomes below $75,000. So that's about 83% of job growth in Apex. Slide 20 shows that we have had multiple, several new multifamily housing developments in Apex. Several of these have been built since 2019. But all of the newer developments are market rate and can be categorized as luxury with a lot of amenities. The older apartments in town are the ones that are actually affordable, so West Haven, Beach Ridge, and Wake Acres. And slide 21 shows that one of the things that contributes to that is the high land costs in Apex as well as the, the lack of sites that meet the requirements to get some of that, those tax credits that help support subsidized units. So this is just showing that the different factors that were scored on. So that is a lot of public input and data to take in. So slide 22 kind of summarizes from the housing needs assessment, what do we need to think about as we start to work toward recommendations and establishing goals for this plan? So key points here, Apex is rapidly losing affordable entry point or starter homes. Market pressures also appear to be displacing moderate-income families. We aren't attracting young adults. Also, we're attracting a less racially diverse population compared to Wake County overall. Our affordable housing options and supportive services are limited for seniors who desire to age in place. We do not have a proportional share of the region's subsidized rental housing. Most of the supportive housing and services in Apex are provided by small programs, religious organizations, and nonprofits. And it was noted that the lack of clear affordable housing development requirements tends to lead to uncertainty, which can pose a barrier to new housing developments. Okay, so skipping to slide 24, that's a summary of what we've learned so far. Where we're headed is on this slide. We will be continuing public engagement. We will be having a workshop or open house of some sort as we have preliminary recommendations ready for public input. We're being a little flexible in exactly what that looks like. It may be, you know, a virtual town hall type setting. We will also be presenting the draft plan and recommended plan to the planning board and Town Council. So we're just turning toward recommendations at this point, and this is kind of what you can expect in the coming months. And that concludes my presentation, but I'll be happy to try to answer your questions if you have any.
Thank you, Shannon. Does anybody on the board have any additional questions for Shannon at this time?
I just want to say, this is Mark Steele, that I've been to all the committee meetings and the staff is doing a really excellent job. It's a very difficult, complex, and important subject. So if any of you on the planning board have questions and you want to take, talk to me offline, I'm happy to do that.
Thanks, Mark. Thanks for volunteering your time. Anybody else have a question for Shannon at this time? All right, thank you, Shannon. And hearing none, we will now move to the public hearing section. So we have item number one, I guess Shannon stays on, online. We have a public hearing and possible motion regarding the amendments to the Southwest Area Study. So with that, Shannon, take it back over.
Okay, thank you. And if you're following along, I am now on slide 27. So we have several proposed, actually five proposed amendments to the thoroughfare and Collector Street Plan for consideration today. I want to provide a little bit of background about the Southwest Area Study because these are recommendations from. I want to provide a little bit of background about the Southwest Area Study because these are recommendations from the Southwest Area Study. So when we do our local long-range transportation plan, we coordinate with neighboring jurisdictions, but we're really focused in on Apex. These area plans are led by the Capital Area Metropolitan Planning Organization, or CAMPo. And they're intended to take a broader regional look at needs. And they also update the transportation demand model. So there's some additional data that goes into consideration. So these recommendations today are coming from that study. I've grouped them into two categories. The, some of them are related to the updated transportation demand model and are really showing where we have additional needs for capacity. And then the first are related to an analysis of potential road, railroad grade separations. So where we may need bridges or tunnels. And there's really two locations that we'll focus on for those today. One is at Friendship Road and the other is at Bosco Road, which is the future Richardson Road extension location. So there's a few things to consider with potential grade separations. There's what's called an exposure index that's calculated by multiplying annual average daily traffic, shown in the second column here, times the number of trains that pass by the location. So there's nine trains that pass by daily in these locations. The exposure index is pretty low for these two locations now, but based on future traffic projections, they increase quite a lot. So anything above thirty thousand in a rural location, DOT suggests looking, considering a grade separation. So both of these locations would meet that requirement. So moving on to slide twenty-eight, which shows the first proposed amendment. This is at Holland Road, which our current plan shows a realignment of Holland Road to intersect with Friendship Road. This amendment would remove that realignment and instead add a roundabout with a new two-lane thoroughfare that would cross over Old US One, over the CSX railroad tracks, and meet back up with Friendship Road. This does include a realignment of the future major Collector Street as well as the minor Collector Street. Not related to the grade separation, but while we were looking at this area, we're also recommending realigning the minor collector alignment at Pleasant Plains Road so that it would line up with the future park entrance. So this is alternative one for this location. And without all of the markup, this is what it would look like. We were presented with a second alternative by a developer that was intended to minimize the impacts to this property here. So this alternative would shift the roundabout slightly further to the south, just to try to avoid some of the impacts to this property. That's the only thing that changed here. And then this is alternative two without all of the markup. So all of the amendments I'm presenting to you today were reviewed with Public Works and Transportation, Fire, EMS, and Police. And there weren't any major concerns with these amendments. All cited the benefit as far as avoiding potential conflicts between vehicles and trains. And then generally, our emergency service providers just noted that they would want to be involved in the design of eventual projects for median break opportunities. Planning staff originally recommended support of this amendment because of the the same, you know, the reduction in potential conflicts between vehicles and trains, the connectivity benefits, the fact that eventually it will provide another means of egress for Pleasant Park without crossing the railroad tracks, and because the future grade separation to the east was removed from our transportation plan. Since my original staff report, you're aware that we received hundreds of comments from the public, particularly about the concern of impacts to the church property. So just, that's this property here we're focusing in on. The church has a master plan to expand their buildings. And the main concern is about the impact of even the, the southern alignment of the roadway on their plans. And it would impact their ability to move forward with this plan. There were also comments about the proximity of the road to their playing fields, concern about noise. But the main, main comments were about the property impacts themselves. So given this information and the strong public concern, planning staff have revised our recommendation. And we are not recommending adding this change to the transportation plan. Okay, the next proposed amendment is at Richardson Road, which is right here between Hume Olive Road and Old US One. The plan already shows a grade separation in this location. The amendment is a slight adjustment in the alignment of the future connector that would go between Richardson Road and Old US One Highway, and a slight shift in the alignment of the Richardson Road corridor. The main driver here is making sure that our plan matches the least environmentally damaging practicable alternative. Because there's a conservation easement that Richardson Road will eventually cross through, we've investigated this corridor in more detail than typical at a long-range planning level. And we're recommending the alternative that best minimizes impacts to that conservation easement. And I'm sorry, I forgot to say, that was on slide thirty-three, and now I'm moving to slide thirty-four. These get into the recommendations that are more about meeting travel demands. So this is New Hill Olive Chapel Road. North is over here. This is Olive Chapel Road and Old US One Highway to the right of the screen. The recommendation here is to update our plan, which currently shows a two-lane rural thoroughfare in this location to a four-lane median divided thoroughfare. One of the reasons for this recommendation is that this corridor will be identified as future NC seven fifty-one. So while already an important corridor for commuters, that's expected to increase in the future. Traffic volumes likewise are anticipated to increase. In two thousand eighteen, we measured thirty-seven hundred vehicles per day. By two thousand forty-five, that will, that's expected to increase to over fifteen thousand vehicles per day. So that's why the Southwest Area Study is recommending this change. As far as planning staff, we're, we're not making a recommendation regarding this amendment. There are clear capacity benefits by widening. But we have heard in previous planning processes that this corridor has an important rural context. And the sentiment in the past has been that people would like to maintain that context. So we would like to leave that decision in the hands of the planning board and town council. Okay, moving to slide thirty-five. And I'm getting close. This is Center Street and Ten Ten Road between US One and Smith Road. The recommend, or the proposal here is to upgrade our plan from future four-lane with median to future six-lane with median. And this is consistent with DOT's plans for this roadway. So we are recommending support of the amendment so that we can be transparent to the public about what to expect here. And slide thirty-six, this is north, North Salem Street between US sixty-four and Apex Peakway. Our plan currently shows future three-lane widening. And the study recommendation is to increase to future four-lane with median widening. Again, it's because of traffic projections. In two thousand eighteen, there were ninety-three hundred vehicles per day. And projections are upward of twenty-three thousand vehicles per day. Again, planning staff would like to leave this in the hands of planning board and town council because we've heard from the public in the past that the context is more important than the capacity needs on this corridor. And there are historic resources that would be very tight to kind of thread the needle as you approach Apex Peakway. So the final slide is thirty-seven. This is just a summary so that you have it in front of you as you have questions or open the public hearing. And that concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Shannon. At this time, I, let's see. I guess it's open for public hearings, so did staff want to read any of the public comments that came in on this issue?
Yes, I believe that we have comments recorded. If those could please be played.
This comment is from Adela Kim, who lives at four one zero zero Y O. Hello, I am one of the parish members. A few days ago, I heard about the sad news about the thoroughfare and Collector Street Plan for Holland Road and Friendship Road. This is not only a cathedral, but also serves as a spiritual support center for the Korean community in the area. It is a place where ethnic minorities can share with each other, become an example for the community, and dream of a community that helps each other. Please help us be free to work here. Thank you for supporting us. This comment is from Alex Alberti, who lives at nine two four zero Brookhouse Street, Raleigh. Dear Apex Town Council, I am requesting for you to please vote against the proposed road plan for Holland Road. This plan will have a devastating effect on the Korean Catholic community. It not only compromises their fairly recent facility, but also their safety and the legacy of the North Carolina Korean diaspora held together by faith. Thank you. This comment was also signed by Ashley Buffa, who lives at one twelve Boilis Street, Greensboro. This comment is from Anna Kim, who lives at four oh eight Tressa Brook Court, Cary. I am writing to express in the strongest terms possible my objection to this application, which would very potentially destroy the foundation of our church. I write in connection with the above planning application. I wish to object strongly to the development of the road in this location because it will cause physical and psychological trauma of the children who attend the church. This comment is from Austin Jeffries, who lives at two three zero eight Sherwood Street in Greensboro. Dear Town of Apex, and more importantly, its representatives, I write to you in protest to vote against the proposed amendments to the thoroughfare and Collector Street Plan. Ha Seong Paul Jung is dedicated to hundreds of Korean-American Catholic families in North Carolina. It is beyond a house of worship. It's decades worth of community prosperity that contributes to the triangle. This plan will render the church into inoperable conditions, which will compromise the safety of our children and parishioners. If you vote in favor of proposed amendments, it can only be assumed that it comes with your accompanying approval to marginalize the Catholic-Korean community. Please vote against this expansion plan. Thank you. This comment is from Beaumseut Lee, who lives at four thirty-eight Berry Chase Way, Cary. To whom it may concern, I am writing to express in the strongest terms possible my objection to the below application plan, which can very potentially destroy the foundation of our church. I disagree with this plan because it goes against religion and the founding of the American public. Thank you. This comment is from Claire Kong, who lives at five zero zero two Blackjack Oak Drive, Cary. I was just told that the changes in the Apex transportation plan will affect the planned mass building for Saint Ha Seong Paul Jung Catholic Church. Our church is running Korean school and Sunday school for Korean-American children in the RTP area. If a new road is constructed as planned, our children will be exposed to car accidents and dust from the road right next to our mass building. Please kindly reconsider the plan. This comment is from Eileen Rue, who lives at three zero zero nine Sandsbury Way, Apex. Hello, my name is Eileen Rue. I'm a first grader at the Olive Chapel Elementary School. When I was in Indiana, I did not want to move to North Carolina because I did not want to leave my friends. However, I changed my mind because my mother told me there was a Korean church and an H Mart in North Carolina. I'm very happy now because I have more Korean friends and wonderful foods from H Mart. My dad told me that there may be a new road passing our church land. My dad also told me there will be a smaller space for playing and that it would be dangerous to play outside because of the new road. My dad said the Korean school may close if there are not enough kids to attend. I will be very sad if I have fewer friends in the church and if I cannot study Korean anymore. Thank you. This comment is from Helena Park of one twelve Lake Valley Lane, Durham. I am a member of the community of Saint Ha Seong Paul Jung Catholic Church. Saint Ha Seong Paul Jung Catholic Church is the only parish dedicated to Korean Catholics in the Carolinas. Parishioners come from miles away to keep the Sabbath and celebrate the joyous Mass each weekend. For many, this church is not only a house of worship, but a home and a sanctuary. We have learned that on September fourteenth, the Town of Apex Planning Board members will vote on an expansion that will cut through the future site of our church and prevent mass from being held in the future if the road is built. Also, this future plan will prevent the church from using our current septic system, which will lead to our church being inoperable. In addition to the church, the livelihood of the children who regularly attend for faith formation and Korean language school is threatened by this proposal. Many families are worried about the safety of their children due to the proximity of the proposed road to the church. Many children of this parish often play outside. And with a major road crossing into the property, it will be a major safety hazard. The proposed road being so close to the current building, the space of silent reflection around the holy tabernacle would no longer be able to provide a quiet place of sanctity and prayer. This comment has been signed additionally by Angela Yang of eight nine zero five Leader Lane, Raleigh, Sue Kim of one thirteen Elway Drive, Clayton, Jacob Warren of five Lothian Road, Brighton, Massachusetts, Joshua Strayhorn of six two eight Rock Spring Road, High Point, North Carolina, Elizabeth Kim of two oh two Park Valley Lane, Cary, Jackson Thomas of one forty-three Campbell Avenue in Ithaca, New York, Sungham Dan of four oh eight Tressa Brook Court, Cary, Catherine Burleson of six six two Pinewood Drive, Virginia Beach, Virginia, Budak Nah of one eight three zero one Praxis Way, Cary, Carolyn Kagya of one oh five Thorsby Court, Cary, and Ha Ju Chang of three one 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 Bluff Oak Drive, Cary. This comment is from Ha Ju Chang, who lives at three one 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 Bluff Oak Drive, Cary. Our church is the only parish dedicated to Korean Catholics in Wake County with more than forty years of history. Many families are worried about the safety of their children due to the proximity of the proposed road to the church. This public comment is from Jung Bang, who lives at three one three three Beach Croft Lane in Apex. I am a member of Saint Ha Seong Paul Jung Korean Catholic Church. I've been living in Wake County since nineteen ninety-four and am currently living in Apex. I'm writing this email because I do not understand how this proposal started. When I visited Town Hall two to three years ago, I met with Brenda Colbertson and Liz Lofton. The Town of Apex had some kind of master plan already, and I was told where our future church entrance sign should be. It was all assigned and designated by the town. Thus, I was very shocked and am still stick to my stomach when I heard about the Town of Apex thoroughfare and Collector Street Plan for Holland Road and Friendship Road with town knowing our master plan. We've had a piece of land in Apex for more than twenty We've had a piece of land in Apex for more than twenty years, and we sold that land and purchased the current property about ten years ago. We've been staying in Apex since our first land and never left here because we've always liked being here. We've been with the Town of Apex long before most developers rushed in. We have seen how Apex has grown with you guys. We have built our flex building, and recently we added our extension. This is just one phase out of our three-phase master plan. The town's proposed road will pass through our future church roof. This plan is not only destroying our future church, but also destroying our Korean culture as well. Most of our four hundred and fifty parishioners are mainly first and second Korean immigrant generations. We have more than fifty US-born kids in our church. This place is not just some worship place. This is where we pass our inheritance to our next generations. We teach our kids Korean language and Korean traditional culture here. Kids and other members gather here and hang around with people who share common backgrounds. Please let me know if you can offer any better diversity added to the Town of Apex than this. Please reconsider this plan, as this plan harms the Korean minority community. Thank you for your reconsideration. This comment is from Tongwa Emily Lee, who lives at 1432 Carpenter Town Lane, Cary. Your proposal will needlessly disrupt weekly mass for four hundred and fifty parishioners and will certainly endanger the lives of many of their children, who often play outside in close proximity to the proposed road. Saint Ha Seong Paul Jung Catholic Church began as a small prayer group of Korean students at NC State University and UNC Chapel Hill. Due to a lack of funds, it was necessary for us to share space with the larger Saint Michael's Catholic Church based in Cary. However, we've always had the dream and aspiration of moving to our very own church, which would afford us the ability to freely hold mass and other religious events without any restrictions. It has taken our close-knit organization nearly two decades to raise enough capital to build our church. Having a secluded, quiet sanctuary to hold mass has made our organization more attractive in the eyes of many parishioners, not just within the Town of Apex, but also in neighboring Raleigh, Cary, Chapel Hill, Holly Springs, and Durham. This has caused our organization's numbers to swell by several hundred just in a few years. While you might not think this is an important feat, our church brings further recognition to Apex and often hosts extracurricular activities that benefit the local community. Going through with the placement of this obtrusive road would inevitably cause the sanctuary to lose parishioners, and as a consequence, funds to both keep this church operational and have the ability to build further planned extensions to accommodate a growing community. In short, please reconsider your proposal and the drastic consequences that it would bring. This comment is from John Rue of 3009 Sandsbury Way, Apex. Dear members of the Planning Board and Town Council of the Town of Apex, Saint Ha Seong Paul Jung Catholic Church is a small but active community that connects first-generation immigrants, second-generation immigrants who want to learn their language and cultural background, and other ethnic groups who love Korean culture. Not only do we have Catholic mass in Korean, but we also offer the culture and language school to the local community and invite neighbors to traditional holiday celebrations, such as the Lunar New Year and the Full Moon Festival, to introduce our culture to them. On our Korean festival days, people from very diverse backgrounds, including white, African-American, and Hispanic people, enjoy together traditional Korean games that are more than fifteen hundred years old. Due to these activities that we hold around the year, our church is more than just a church for the families, who commit most of their personal time to enriching the local community with cultural diversity. The thoroughfare and collector's street plan has raised concerns about our ability to serve the minority community and enrich the cultural diversity of our society. The church has had a long-term plan to further develop the church buildings to offer multi-language religious services and cultural education for children, as well as more cultural events for neighbors in a secure and sacred environment. People in the church have been working to raise development funds, hoping to contribute to Apex and the Triangle by enriching diversity and cultural depth, which has been their new American dream. I envision that the church could grow as a center of Korean culture, representing the minorities of Apex as well as the Triangle if the plan is revised to let the church continue to move forward for their religious and cultural mission. Therefore, I strongly disagree with the current city plan and urge you to revise it. This comment is from Julia Kim, who lives at 116 Vintage Hill Circle, Apex. Dear Town of Apex, this is Julia Kim. I go to Penny Road Elementary School. I am nine years old. I know you are voting. Our church is important to our society and community. I pray and eat with my friends at church. Even though I do not speak Korean well, I love being at church. If you add a road to our church, children will be hurt because they play on the streets. Then children will go to the hospital. Let's just work together like a family would do. P.S. Apex is our home.
Shannon, could I interrupt for a second?
Yes.
So, if we were in the chambers, I think, you know, a lot of these are becoming redundant, and I know they've all been read into record. Do we need to continue to listen to all of them?
I believe that the first twelve comments were recorded. I'm not sure if there's any remaining that were recorded, but yes, the remainder are all similar. And I do have one that was not one of the first twelve received. That if it's okay with you, I'd just like to read out because it's one different comment, the only different comment that we received in response to the proposed amendments.
Okay, yeah, so, and then if anybody else on the planning board wants to continue to hear them, I'm all open to that, but it seems like they were getting to be very similar in nature, so, but yeah, go ahead, Shannon, and read.
And I wasn't counting, but I feel like we must have made it through.
Yeah, I know we went more than twelve, I think.
This is Tina. Before you read that one, I do have a concern with, with cutting them off, with not continuing to read. I realize if we were in person, we would encourage folks that they have a similar, if they have similar comments to, you know, to let one person speak, but we don't really have that advantage. So I am a little concerned with cutting it off, even if they have a similar sentiment. Folks aren't really given that level of guidance.
Tina, we do have all the, we do have all their comments in a file that was sent to us, so we can read them.
Yes, I, I realize that. I think I'm concerned with, you know, the difference in the in-person versus person. You know, I may have the, the comments, you know, with any board meeting, you know, presented, you know, sent to me beforehand, but also people will come in attendance to speak, so I'm trying to keep with consistency there. The staff has a, Diana, the staff has a recommendation on that. I'd appreciate that.
My understanding is we have to play all twelve.
Okay, I thought we played more than twelve. No, I thought we played, we've had more than twelve played.
I believe we've had more than twelve, so I'm wondering how many more there are.
Well, we only need to do twelve. I wasn't counting, so if you all were counting and there's been twelve, then we're good.
Okay.
I was not counting. I'm sorry.
Shannon, do you want to read the last one, please?
Yes, I can read this one, and I, and maybe it'd be possible for, I'm not sure who's playing the comments, but I'm not sure if it's possible to tell if twelve have been read yet, but while I read this one, maybe we could get that information. Okay, so this one is, hopefully I'm pronouncing this correctly, from Janine Kaiser. She says, "Thank you for providing an opportunity to comment on these proposed changes to the transportation plan. I would like to ensure that road use by cyclists is taken into consideration with these plans. Old US One is also US Bike Route One. Ten Ten Center Street is also NC Bike Route Five. Richardson, Friendship, Holland, New Hill, Olive Chapel, and Olive Chapel, future Apex Bike Route One are all frequently utilized by the area cycling community. Virtually all of the roadways listed are on the Apex Bike Plan's comprehensive bike network. My concern is that the medians will end up like the ones on Woods Creek and Sunset Lake and NC Bike Route Five in Holly Springs, conflict points. Medians can narrow roadways and squeeze cyclists off the road, causing points of conflict between motorists and cyclists. Please ensure that the lanes are wide enough to accommodate cyclists without angering motorists. Not all median, medians are bad. Medians along Cary Parkway, for example, work well because the outer line, outer lane is wide for cyclists. As part of any complete streets plan, I'm sure that both cyclists and pedestrians have been considered, and these will improve the safety of both pedestrians and cyclists." And just for your information, I did follow up with this commenter to share our typical section, which does accommodate bike lanes where designated on our bike network.
Okay, thank you, Shannon.
Excuse me, Chair, I do have seventeen comments. I counted.
Okay, and just for everybody on, like I said, the, the comments that were, all the emails that did come in, we have those in our, an email that came in today or last Friday, I can't remember when I saw it, that you can, we can read through the, all of the comments. And Shannon, one question I had for clarification, so the, for Amendment One, the alternative that was farther south, did that still impact the site?
So in terms of property, what they're showing, I'll just flip back to it. So the red line would be the approximate right-of-way, so this would be some parking that they had planned. And then the blue is the thoroughfare buffer. It could be a little bit tighter than what's shown here, but it, it would impact the building that they have planned here.
And that was Alternative Two?
Yes, yes.
Okay, okay, that's, that's why I wanted to make sure. So Alternative One would actually gone right through the building?
Yes.
Okay. And then, if you went through the detail, is there a reason why we cannot, Holland Road cannot continue with the existing path?
So, we, we can maintain the realignment that's shown on our plan now. The proposal is what would work for a bridge, basically. So if we have the grade separation, then we needed to look at a different alignment. And that was based on the exposure index, which was above that threshold, but not as far above some of the other locations that we've looked at.
So we keep, if we maintain the Holland Road to Friendship Road, doing a grade separation of a bridge over top, is it not feasible at all from a construction standpoint?
Yes, that's one of the things that are, so there was a roadway design engineer who looked at these for us. So in terms of feasibility, I need to rely on the engineer's judgment, and that wasn't what they were able to recommend. We did ask about, you know, the least impactful alternatives for this location, and that was not a possibility there.
Shannon, this is Mark. Did they look at pushing the roundabout just, just far enough to miss the property for the church? Or does that start to then negatively impact the next property?
Yeah, you're exactly right. So any further south, it does begin to impact the next property, which is a smaller parcel, and our understanding is, they also have expansion, expansion plans. It's another church located there.
Okay, thank you. I'm familiar with that area because I bike on that area, and I think, I understand why the staff is recommending no, and I think that's probably the only thing we can do right now, but we're are going to have to address that, that area. It's, it's becoming dangerous there where Holland comes in, offset from Friendship. No matter what we do, it's dangerous right now.
This is Tina. I, I want to second that. I completely understand where we are. I, and why staff has recommended no, but I am concerned about how much, this is going to have to be addressed, and I don't see any good solutions at the moment, but I, I fear we, this needs to be addressed, and we're, we're going to, we're, we're going to have to deal with it sooner or later.
Good.
This is Diane. Shannon, did you want to comment on the current plan? Because the offset is in our current plan to be corrected.
Yes, so if, if the Planning Board does not recommend the change, then this realignment of Holland Road would stay on our plan. So we would recommend keeping the realignment to correct that intersection and the issues there. And then we're also recommending this amendment over here with the minor collector's street.
Thank you for clarifying that.
And would that be a great separation over the railroad tracks, or would it maintain just a normal crossing?
So, our current plan maintains an at-grade crossing of the railroad tracks.
And at US One?
Yes, correct. So basically, just making an adjustment to line up that intersection there between Holland and Friendship.
Okay. All right. Does anybody else have any other questions or any other discussion points for Shannon, or just to discuss amongst ourselves right now for these four amendments?
Shannon, this is Reggie Skinner. I'm guessing bike Apex's plans, taking into account, just wanted to confirm what you said in regards to the bike lanes. So any of these roads that become four-lane roads in the median, the far-right lane would no longer be the narrow width. It would be a wider width, which I guess is what sixteen feet versus twelve?
Yes, so Bike Apex recommends different facility types for these different routes. Richardson Road, for example, has a side path recommended. Old US One Highway has bicycle lanes, and our, our typical section for four-lane median-divided roadways includes six feet where we have bicycle lanes. So we do plan on, you know, that extra width so that the issue that was brought up in the comments doesn't happen where cyclists kind of get squeezed between the median and the vehicles.
Okay, thank you.
So I think we've thoroughly discussed Amendment One, at least now until we, if we get any more comments, and we'll vote on. What about Amendment Two? Any discussions on the Richardson Road between Humme, Humme Olive and Old US One? Or with the, the New Hill Olive Chapel Road between US One and Olive Chapel Road? That would either stay where it is, because staff has no opinion on this one, so they're kind of looking to us to make a decision whether we would like to see this go to a four-lane and extend seven fifty-one, or leave it as more of a rural two-lane. So any, any comments, discussion?
This is Mark Steele. I'm, I live out pretty close to that area. I think, I understand what they're saying about the rural character. I think if they do make it four-lane and make it part of four five, four-five-one, it's going to, it will really change that area quite a bit. So, on the other hand, there's a lot of development as you get down close to Old Route One. It's, there's three, four, or five developments going in there all simultaneously, so, I don't know, I'm just kind of torn about that, but I, I can understand why the staff isn't recommending anything. I think I would vote no on that if we were going to have a vote.
Anybody else wish to comment?
This is Reggie Skinner. So my understanding of seven fifty-one is the major collector that would be extended, and that would have the same Bike Apex requirements where there's either a bike lane or some extra width there, correct?
Yep, so we actually have another amendment that we'll be bringing forward for consideration in the future that, that would add a side path to New Hill Olive Chapel Road from the south all the way up to the American Tobacco Trail. That's a request from Holly Springs. But we, we aren't ready to bring that one forward. We're looking at the historic area around the intersection, but that will be coming. So we're, we're looking at bike facilities as well for that route.
But the side paths are not usually utilized by road cyclists, correct? That's more for families. That's more for families with children and joggers and strollers?
Yes, so when we bring that forward, we would have to make a recommendation regarding whether we keep the bike lanes in addition to adding side path, or whether it's a change in facilities. But today, we're really just asking about the widening.
Yeah.
Okay. And one last question on Richardson. The speed limit for Richardson currently is forty-five, is that right?
For Richardson Road?
Is it higher?
I believe the part that's built is forty-five, but maybe, I think Russell's on the line. Maybe he could confirm for me if he knows offhand.
Yeah, it's all, it's all forty-five.
Okay. Thank you.
This is Tina. The, the New Hill Olive Chapel Road, I'm, I am torn on. While I definitely want to keep the unique context and appreciate that the staff is, is leaving it to the planning board and then ultimately Town Council. I also recognize that, you know, a lot of our citizens, a lot of our neighbors are concerned about traffic. And there is a lot of growth. And you had it down Olive Chapel in that area. And so I, I'm very torn because I, what is that precipice? Where do we change it? Because the growth is coming, and so with the growth comes the traffic. And so do we have an opportunity to make that adjustment now? But, you know, also definitely understand the wanting to keep the, the unique context. I just wanted to throw that out there for discussion while I, understanding kind of both sides of that.
Okay, thank you, Tina.
If I could add one more thing that I meant to say about that road. So we, we had the same issue with Advanced Apex for this particular road. It's becoming more pressing because the, the plan is to identify it as future seven fifty-one and extend seven fifty-one. But the way we've handled it up to now is it's shown as a two-lane rural thoroughfare on our transportation plan, which requires the same right-of-way width as a four-lane median divided thoroughfare. So we are, you know, making sure that as growth occurs, if that plan does eventually change, that we haven't allowed things to be built in the path. So I just wanted to provide that additional piece of information I meant to share.
Thank you, Shannon.
This is Mark. That makes me feel a little better about kicking the can down the road on that one, because I was concerned like Tina was, that if we say no now, then later we could box ourselves in. But you're saying we won't be boxed in, so we could at least re, come back and address it later.
Yes, thank you for that.
Okay. Any other discussion around Amendment Three? All right, hearing none. How about Amendment Four, the ten-ten road, which is way over needed? So, but that's just my opinion of driving there at certain times of day when it's totally backed up. Any comments, discussion around the ten-ten, expanding from to the future four-lane with median? To going from, from the future four-lane to a future six-lane with median?
This is Reggie Skinner. That one is well overdue. It's also on the state's plan.
Yeah. Any other comments, discussion?
Michael, this is Tim. Can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you, Tim.
Okay, for some reason I was muted when I was trying to make a comment earlier, so my apologies. I didn't want to step on anybody while speaking. I want to hop in on the future four-lane of the Olive Chapel. And it, it seems like growth is happening out that direction. Now, I don't particularly care to, to change the roads, but as council continues to approve some of these higher-density communities, eventually something's going to have to be done. And it does seem like it could be a good kind of connection between one and sixty-four. Almost kind of an outer belt line, if you will, of Apex for some of this, you know, some of these larger communities. And, you know, later on tonight, we're going to look at another larger subdivision coming in off of Reagan Road. You know, so we say we want to, you know, keep the, the feel of the way the road looks, but then everybody keeps on approving these large neighborhoods and then says, what happened? Well, we keep approving large neighborhoods in areas in, in the country. That's exactly what happens. So I think it's, eventually it's going to have to happen. It's just a matter of when. So I, I think there should, you know, should be some more, more thought into this one, but, you know, I just want to kind of put that out there.
Okay, thank you.
The more we approve, the more, the wider we're going to have to get these roads to, to make the traffic flow, so.
Thanks, Tim. Any, did you have any other, about any other amendments if you couldn't get in? Any other comments? All right, so, so back to Amendment Four, any other discussion or comments on, on the widening to six lanes?
This is, this is Tina. Again, I, Tim, I really appreciate your comments. And I think as we consider, as we consider this for a vote and this Town Council considers it, I think the broader discussion, it, it definitely needs to include, you know, if we are approving these, you know, larger developments, you know, what does that mean, the consequences of that? And so those conversations go hand in hand. And as, as we look at approving or, or, or not, that needs to be a part of the conversation. So I really appreciate that you brought that front and center. Thank you.
Mr. Marx, may I make one comment?
Yes.
So I just want to kind of bring forward that that recommendation for New Hill Olive Chapel Road is not driven just by what's happening, happening in Apex. And that's where the Southwest Area Study comes into play. That's identified as a regional recommendation because it's future seven fifty-one. So, you know, traffic from all areas south of us coming, you know, heading on that route to areas further north. So just wanted to kind of, because this is an area study recommendation, kind of keep bringing that part to the table.
Is this just Campo, or is this, is, as a future seven fifty-one, this is NC DOT also has it on their long-range plan?
So the area study informs Campo's long-range plan, which then informs the state long-range plan. So the metropolitan, the next metropolitan long-range plan is being worked on now. And these recommendations will inform it. If Apex says we disagree with something from the area study, then that's where we have to have more conversations.
Okay, thank you. All right. Any other discussions on either Amendment Three or Amendment Four? Heard from Reggie on Amendment Four. Anybody else want to comment on the ten-ten widening? Any discussion? If not, we'll go to the last amendment. It's the North Salem Street between the Peakway and US sixty-four. Staff on this one also has no opinion. It's kind of leaving it up to us.
This is Reggie Skinner. I'd say that it's also highly needed to be widened. One lane in each direction or three lanes is not sufficient for the amount of traffic heading into downtown.
Yeah, I agree, Reggie. And then, but then on the other hand, I also say, you know, that's kind of our gateway into our nice downtown community. And I'm not sure, you know, if you have five lanes coming in there, or, you know, four lanes with the median. Does it, where does it funnel in? And so, but maybe, you know, it peels off on the Peakway and it, it doesn't go in. Some of that area right after the Peakway, I do like to get.
I was under the impression from the mockups that it would go from the Peakway to sixty-four. Is that not the case?
No, I think that is the case, yeah.
But yeah, that's, the Peakway would be the diversion around the town. So it makes sense to have it widened from sixty-four to Peakway.
Right. And then the transition is back to a smaller, more natural transition into the downtown area.
Yep.
Yeah, I think with the downtown redevelopment plans, assuming those haven't been completely blown up by all the COVID stuff, I, I think we're going to need to be able to bring more traffic off the sixty-four into downtown once we have more restaurants, et cetera. But, but I, I do really worry about it changing the look of, of that entryway. As one of you just said, it's like our doormat.
Yeah. Although we do have a car dealership now as a.
Oh, that's right.
Yeah, the entryway would be post-Pique Way.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, I guess you're right. I guess if we kind of are saying with, you're right, I forgot about the car dealership, that's already totally changed that. Yeah.
Any other comments or discussion from the?
Now, one other thing, Shannon, keep me honest, but wasn't the Davis Drive portion also being widened? So why be a bottleneck between sixty-four and Apex? I mean, it makes sense to keep it all the same width.
Yes, so this is definitely from a capacity perspective. And, you know, if that's, making sure we want to keep traffic moving, that would definitely support the widening recommendation, if that's the main consideration. And I can go back to that graphic, so that you can see how it ties into Davis Drive.
Yeah, you got the school there, you got the car dealerships, and a church. A lot of traffic there now.
And, and a school. Isn't there a school there too, right south of the dealership?
All, all heading to the Peakways. I mean, that section should get widened.
Yeah.
There's no pedestrian traffic there now.
Yep.
Shannon, what's the long-range plan for the, the Peakway going in that area, going to more lanes? Is that, is that part of the long-range plan for that to be?
Yes, so, so the Apex Peakway, the entire Peakway, the plan is eventually four-lane median divided. So the North Salem recommendation would match what we have on our plan now for Apex Peakway.
Okay. But south of the Peakway, is that still at a, still just three-lane?
Um, yep, well, two-lane existing, two-lane thoroughfare. We have turn lanes.
Right, with turn, okay. Any other comments? Yeah?
Hey, Michael, this is Tim. I just wanted to hop in also on just about this particular one. And looking at those homes that are in that area, just kind of up and down, you know, kind of the, not necessarily historical homes, but the older homes, I think we all kind of know what I'm referencing here, that are up and down that section of the street. When we widen that, what, what kind of effects are we going to have on, you know, their properties too? Because some of the properties, I believe, are pretty close to the road. So if we go from two lanes to four lanes, or three lanes with a median, or I'm sorry, two four lanes, I'm sorry, four lanes with a median.
You primarily talking about on the east side?
How much feet are we losing from center line of that road to either way?
Well, it depends on if it's symmetrical widening or not, though. They'll have to do a best fit through there, probably.
So it, it could go to one side of a property versus the other based upon each property? Is that what we're saying?
That's what I would think. This is Tommy, by the way.
Thank you, Tommy.
Yes, so we, we start with one hundred and ten feet for our standard section for four-lane with median widening. And at a planning level, you know, we try to plan on when there's redevelopment, fifth, or fifty-five feet from either side of the center line. When it's an existing roadway like this, if it would ever be a public project, you know, we would need to look at the detailed design, especially in a corridor that's this tight, and would likely need to narrow our typical section to try to minimize impacts as much as possible. And could potentially, you know, widen further to one side than another. But that's part of the issue here is, is it would be very tight.
Okay, and how much further up Davis Drive? I could not see it on my screen.
So I'm not sure I heard your full question, but this proposal is to show four lanes with median from US sixty-four to Apex Peakway. Further north, we've already, we already have the four-lane with median on our plan.
Got it. Okay, so it's, it's only two sixty-four. Okay.
All right, any other comments on the, these amendments for this, for the Southwest Area Study? All right, hearing none. We will table this. If there's other public comments, we will hear those on Wednesday and vote at that point. So with that, we will move on to item number two. If Jenna is ready, this is a possible hearing, a public hearing and possible motion regarding amendments to the Bike Ped System Plan map for the Park at Jordan Masters subdivision plan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Get us the full screen.
Okay.
Come on, slide thirty-eight. Moving on to slide thirty-nine. So here's a map of the proposed Bicycle and Pedestrian System Plan Map Amendment. And to provide some context, looking at the area off of Wimberly Road, between Future Park off of Wimberly to the west, or to the northwest, and the Preserve at White Oak Creek to the southeast. And the focus of this amendment is really around a proposed development called the Park at Jordan. That we have a master sub, a proposed master subdivision plan for this development. And there are a few elements to this proposed map amendment. The first being changing the facility type from greenway to side path in this section of the, of the development. And the purpose of this is to align the bicycle and pedestrian facility with the minor collector as proposed in the layout for the Park at Jordan subdivision. So this side path is shown here with the dash purple. And then the next element is to provide public greenway access from that side path to the proposed South White Oak Creek Greenway, and then that Future Park, shown here to the south and here to the north. And then the next element of this amendment is to provide a greenway connection through the Park at Jordan subdivision from South White Oak Creek Greenway to the Preserve at White Oak Creek Greenway. And this would run along the utility easement. And then the last element of this Bicycle Pedestrian System Map Plan, System Plan Map Amendment is to add proposed greenway connections off of cul-de-sacs in the Park at Jordan subdivision plan. So I'm going to move to slide forty, to, and this is a snip of the proposed layout for that subdivision to provide some more context for what exactly is proposed for this area. So that proposed side path is shown along the west side of Star Corps Street, that proposed minor collector. And then those two greenways segments are shown here to the north and here to the south. And then that greenway along the utility easement is shown along here to provide that connection to the Preserve at White Oak Creek Greenway. And then those two short connections are shown from the cul-de-sacs on the proposed Hawkins Post Road and the proposed Merkwood Avenue. So we'll go back to slide forty, or excuse me, to slide thirty-nine. And planning staff and Parks and Recreation Cultural Resources staff both recommend approval of this amendment to the Bicycle Pedestrian System Plan Map. And at the last Parks and Recreation and Cultural Resources Advisory Commission meeting, they unanimously recommended approval of this map amendment. And Angela Linky, our Parks and Greenways Planner, and I are here and we're available for any questions that you may have on this amendment.
Okay. Thank you, Jenna. Does anybody have any questions for Jenna before we hear any public comments, if there were any? Does anybody have any questions for Jenna before we hear any public comments, if there were any? Jenna, do you know, was, were there any public comments on this proposed amendment?
No, we have not received any on this proposed amendment.
Okay. All right, so, bringing it back to the, the board, any comments or discussion points on the amendments at the Jordan Point?
The more greenways the better.
Yeah. Yep, I agree. All right, hearing none, I guess we will kind of close that public hearing and we will continue this if we get any other comments. Otherwise, we will look for a motion and vote on the, on Wednesday. And Jenna, you're still up for a public hearing and possible motion regarding amendments to the bike pad system plan for the Apex Friendship Elementary School area.
Okay, thank you. So I'm moving on to slide forty-two. So here's a map of that proposed bicycle pedestrian system plan map amendment. And to provide some context, we're looking at the area south of Hume Olive Road and east of, of, east of Future Richardson Road. And so this, this amendment is associated with the proposed Apex Friendship Elementary School. And Wake County Public School System recently acquired this property just to the west of this yellow area to have a larger site for the elementary school. And then, so the purpose of this amendment is to provide a greenway connection from the elementary school to the future Little Beaver Creek Greenway. And town staff coordinated with Wake County Public School System staff and the designers for the Apex Friendship Elementary School to develop the alignment for the greenway through this site. And the dedication of the easement through that property is included as a condition of the rezoning for the elementary school. And then this greenway alignment would also provide a connection from, from the Friendship Station PUD, actually a section of that that's proposed to be mixed-use and multifamily, to the Little Beaver Creek Greenway. And there, there's an existing greenway easement on the Apex Friendship School campus, shown over here on the right side of the map. And that was, that was dedicated to provide a connection to the middle school and the high school, but it would be challenging to complete the greenway connection from there to the elementary school. So that's why we have this new alignment shown directly from the elementary school to the Little Beaver Creek Greenway. And, again, planning staff and Parks and Recreation and Cultural Resources staff recommend approval of this amendment to the bicycle pedestrian system plan. And at their last meeting, the Parks and Recreation and Cultural Resources Advisory Commission unanimously recommended approval of this amendment. And again, Angela and I are here to answer any questions you may have.
Just, it may just be the graphics, does the Little Beaver Creek Greenway actually well-connected the side path on the Future Richardson Road? It kind of looks like there's a little bit of a gap there.
Yeah, it must just be the, the map, but yeah, that would connect.
Okay, all right, thank you.
That's correct, right, Angela? Just, yeah, I'm pretty sure.
Okay. All right, thank you. Any questions or with, for Jenna regarding this? And also Jenna, was there any public comments on this amendment?
I haven't received any for this one either.
Okay, thank you. So, any discussion points on? I'll echo Reggie, the more greenways and bike paths that we get, it's always a plus. All right, so hearing no additional comments, we will close this one as well, and we'll come back to see if there's any other comments for the sixteenth. Next up, Shelley is gonna present a public hearing and possible motion regarding rezoning case nineteen CZ twenty-one, the Healan PUD. Shelley, are you ready?
Let me just, there we go. As you said, this is nineteen CZ twenty-one, the Healan PUD. This PUD has been in review for quite some time this past. The project encompasses approximately one hundred and forty-one point seven acres. It's loaded, located roughly here in the southwestern corner of the town's jurisdiction. It is bounded along the north by Hume Olive Road, to the west by what is going to be Olive Ridge subdivision, to the south by Woodbury. And then along this edge is Olive Farm, the Friendship Station, yeah, in general. Site currently consists of five parcels. They are primarily wooded, as you can see, with a few residences and small ponds. Also, utility easements in one area and a large section of streams and floodplains through the area.
Just, just for reference, so you're on slide forty-five now, just so everybody knows.
Thank you, and sorry about that.
No worries.
Slide forty-six, this is the existing zoning. The property is currently zoned Wake County R forty W. Surrounding properties are zoned also R forty W or conservation buffer or planned unit development conditional zoning. The applicant is requesting rezoning to planned unit development conditional zoning. Twenty forty-five land use map is split between low-density residential in the northern and western portions and medium-density residential. No land use map amendment is being requested. The slide forty-nine, we have the existing conditions. You mentioned earlier, we have floodplain and streams primarily running throughout, and a lot of wooded area. The applicant conducted a neighborhood meeting on September twenty-sixth, twenty nineteen. The neighborhood meeting report is attached to the staff report. The applicant was not required to conduct a second neighborhood meeting because they actually turned in the initial application in October first, twenty nineteen. And that's what the UDO bases it on, is when the application is submitted. We've been working with the applicant since then on this project. Since the land use map is split between, and I just went back to slide forty-eight, since the land use map is split between low and medium density residential, wanted to point out that the applicants have added a condition that says that the low-density portion shall not exceed more than three units per acre, or ninety-six units in that area. And the overall density for the entire development does not exceed three point seven units per acre. Because of this, the proposed rezoning is consistent with the twenty forty-five land use map designation. We skip to slide fifty. The applicant proposed a number of conditions and uses. I will most of those out to you. The uses are accessory apartment, single-family, townhouse, greenway, recreation facility private, park active, park passive, and utility minor. We have a number of conditions with this PUD that are not what we typically see. So I'm gonna read those out to you. Any mac? Condition A, a maximum of five hundred and twenty residential units shall be permitted upon the property, with no more, no more than two hundred and sixty of which may be developed as townhomes. B, no covenant prohibiting the accessory apartment use shall encumber the property. Richardson Road conservation easement is addressed in this as well. In concert with the town's request for release from the state of North Carolina, at the time of master subdivision approval, the developer shall dedicate or cause to be dedicated to the state of North Carolina a conservation easement over and upon approximately seven point nine four-six acres of land, as shown in the attached Exhibit A, more particularly described therein. If you look at slide number fifty, we have a section that's highlighted in an aqua color here. That's the area that the conservation easement is being proposed for. This blue section adjacent to it is existing conservation area easement. Conservation easement area, excuse me. One of the requirements for the board that reviews this is that it had to be a so that's why this is right next to it. The applicant also has proposed some conditions for energy efficiency. All single-family detached dwellings constructed upon the property will be designed and constructed to include preconfiguration measures for future installation of roof-mounted solar panels. A minimum of two model homes for single-family detached dwellings constructed upon the property shall include installation of solar panels and a power system of at least a four kilowatt capacity. Solar PV systems shall be installed upon, upon the primary amenity building constructed upon the property. The size of such systems shall have a capacity of not less than point seven five kilowatts per one thousand heated square feet of, of building floor area. Development of the property shall include the installation of a minimum of two electric vehicle charging stations within the primary amenity area as designated on the master subdivision plan. Additionally, we have an affordable housing condition. Prior to the recording of the plaque containing the two-hundredth lot upon the property, the developer shall record with Wake County Register of Deeds an option in favor of Habitat for Humanity of Wake County or other nonprofit affordable housing provider, granting them an option to purchase a minimum of ten finished townhome lots within the community, with the cost of such lots being the cost that the developer pays for such lots. In addition, the applicant has proposed a number of architectural conditions, which are all consistent with what we have typically seen. Given that, I will not read those out loud. The proposed design controls for the subdivision include, as I stated before, a maximum density of three point seven units per acre, maximum of five hundred and twenty residential units, maximum of ninety-six of those units within this low-density portion here, and a maximum of two hundred and sixty of the units will be townhomes. The applicant, the applicant, this application was actually submitted prior to the UDO change that required that thirty percent of the site be dedicated as RCA. As you recall, that was approved this summer. It was thirty percent of all residential sites outside of, so west and south of five forty. Since this was submitted in October of twenty nineteen, that was considerably before that. As such, this application complies with the UDO requirement that was in effect at the time to preserve or establish at least twenty-five percent of the subject property as RCA. Because the project is planned to be masqueraded, the applicant is also proposing an additional five percent of RCA within the single-family detached areas, as required by the UDO. The applicant's proposing the following buffers. The UDO requires the buffer along Hume Olive Road to be a thirty-foot type B buffer. The applicant is proposing a fifty-foot type B buffer in this area, it's twenty feet extra. Along the northern boundary here and here, they're proposing a twenty-foot type B buffer, which is consistent with the UDO. The southern boundary, which is adjacent to Woodbury, is proposed to be a fifteen-foot type A buffer. That, the UDO requires that that only be a ten-foot type B buffer. So this is over and above that requirement. The eastern boundary, where it's adjacent to class-one uses, will be a twenty-foot type B buffer. And where it's adjacent to other uses will be a fifteen-foot type A buffer. The same is true for the western boundaries as well, and both of those are consistent with what the UDO requires. Moving to the utility plan on page fifty-one. The Healan PUD will be served by Town of Apex Water, Sanitary, Sewer, and Electrical Systems. The sewer lines that are proposed in the easements existing are in purple, and the water connections are shown in blue on the plan. The ultimate design for those utilities will meet the town's current master plans at subdivision. Let me back up one slide. I'm just gonna back up to slide fifty for a moment. Per the thoroughfare and Collector Street map, Hume Olive Road is designated as an existing two-lane thoroughfare, and a major collector is shown where Horton Ridge Boulevard runs through the development, connecting from Woodbury to Friendship Station PUD. The dead, the developer will dedicate right-of-way along their property for an edge on Hume Olive Road to meet the requirement shown Apex, on advanced Apex. The bicycle pedestrian equestrian plan show the future side path along the northern side of Horton Ridge Boulevard as well. A greenway connection to Olive Ridge subdivision, and a street-side greenway along Hume Olive Road. Project proposes the fifty-foot buffer along Hume Olive, which will accommodate that street-side greenway. In addition, the PUD will provide sidewalks along all sides of the internal streets. There was a TIA performed as a part of this rezoning. Based on the, that TIA, several conditions, several traffic improvements are required. The applicant has agreed to all of the traffic improvements that staff recommended, so I won't read all of those for you. There are twelve in number, however. As a part of the Apex Collector and Thoroughfare Street Plan map, Richardson Road is anticipated to be a four-lane future thoroughfare. And that's to the east through Friendship Station at the moment. The planned corridor for Richardson Road crosses the Little Beaver Creek Conservation Easement. The inter-agency review team made up of state and federal government agencies must approve the release of any land from the conservation easement prior to allowing the crossing of Richardson Road. We're asking for approximately two point oh five acres to be released from the easement so that we can build Richardson Road. In twenty nineteen, the IRT advised that mitigation land should be provided adjacent to and upstream or downstream of the conservation easement. As I said earlier, this pale blue section is a portion of the existing conservation easement. This PUD is adjacent to it, just to the west. There's detailed information about the conservation easement available in the attachments to the staff report. Those are attachments nine A and nine B. And this information was presented to the town council during a work session in January twenty twenty. The applicant is proposing a condition to dedicate the seven point nine four-six acres shown here in, in Teal to the state of North Carolina in order to assist us in obtaining that two point oh five acres of land needed for Richardson Road. On August seventeenth, town staff met with the IRT and were advised that that proposed land has been evaluated and accepted by the IRT. The minutes of that meeting are provided as an attachment in number nine.
Ms. Shelley, this is Reggie Skinner. In summary, are you saying that the road, Richardson, won't be blocked because of that donation of land?
Right, we're saying that the IRT is willing to release that land in exchange for the mitigation area that this project is proposing.
Thank you.
You're welcome. In this case, the, going to the Parks, Recreation, and Cultural Advisory recommendations. Based on bike Apex and the green spaces, open space master plan maps, this project is required to build a portion of a greenway, once, and one street-side greenway, as well as dedicating land for a future park. The town currently owns land located in the kind of northeast of the property. If you can see my cursor on the screen, it's these parcels right here that share what would be the northern boundary of this property and that run along Hume Olive Road adjacent to the property. The Parks and Recreation Advisory Commission reviewed this assemblage at their January twenty-ninth meeting. They unanimously recommended the following, with the understanding that final credits will be determined, final credits and final acreage will be determined at the time of master subdivision plan approval. So there might be some changes, just depending on the final number of units and things of that nature. The dedicated land will be contiguous and directly south of the Town of Apex properties, intended for the future Olive Farm Park, so directly south of these two. The dedicated land shall not be bisected by any roads providing access into the applicant's property, nor by any public or private utility corridors. property, nor by any public or private utility corridors. So it will likely be in this general area. In the event the applicant acquires agreed-upon property off-site, that property may be substituted for the property identified in Section 1 above, and may be dedicated in satisfaction of the requirements of the UDO. So if they're able to purchase one of the adjacent parcels that are identified in the condition, then they would be off the hook for dedicating this particular area. We're look, roughly, we're looking at a dedication of approximately 13.5 acres. Again, that's determined based on the number of units, a calculation based on the number of individual units. So that may change a little bit. And then we also have calculations in the staff report regarding the approximate cost and everything for the greenways as well. With that read, and jumping to slide 55, which is just another version, planning staff recommends the approval of the rezoning condition as, of the planned rezoning as proposed. We believe that the 2045 Land Use Map designates the areas low-density and medium-density. Based on the conditions limiting density, this is consistent with the 2045 Land Use Map designations. We also think the rezoning is reasonable and in the public interest, because it permits a variety of energy-efficient housing types and offers affordable housing options. It's also consistent with the approved residential developments to the east, south, and west, and provides needed mitigation land to release the future Richardson Road corridor from the conservation easement. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them. The applicant is also available to answer any questions you might have.
Shelley, this is Reggie Skinner. You did mention one thing along the entrance. Did you say it was a side path?
So we have two possible options for you. Along Hume Olive Road, there's a, what's called a street-side greenway, kind of meanders through 20 feet of this 50-foot buffer. And then there's also a side path along Horton Ridge Boulevard, on the north side here. As well as, they'll have to connect to the existing green stub from Olive Ridge.
Thank you, Shelley. Does anybody have any question, additional questions for her before we listen to the All right. Mr. Barron, would you like to make a statement or any follow-up?
Hey, sorry about that. I was in the process of unmuting, so if you've just invited me to the podium, I appreciate, the virtual podium, I appreciate the opportunity. Jason Barron with Morningstar Law Group, here on behalf of the applicant. Joining with me tonight are Erica Latham with MI Homes. MI is the co-founder of the Healan PUD community. Also, Peter Knossen with Jones &amp; Knossen, who have been providing land planning and engineering associated with this development. Shelley, and you and I talked about this a little bit earlier today, but slide 55 is perfect for purposes of me walking through the details. I don't know if there's a way that I can kind of take over guiding the, the cursor across the screen. If not, it's not that big of a deal. It would help a little bit, just kind of walking through my presentation. But while Shelley works on that, you know, want to say that our team is incredibly excited to be here. This has been a, a long time in the making in terms of from where we started to where we've gotten. There have been a lot of things that have come up during the process that have presented challenges, but welcome challenges candidly, in an effort to try to bring forward a development that really touches on all of the key components of what PUDs, what planned development districts are all about. And so if you look at page seven of your staff report, it talks about the standards for planned unit development district and conditional zoning standards. And I'm, I'm just going to read because I, the, the items that I want to talk about from a big-picture standpoint, and there are seven of them, but the items really play nicely into what planned developments are designed to do in the town. And that is, in return for greater flexibility and site design requirements, PD districts are expected to deliver exceptional quality community designs that preserve critical environmental resources, provide high-quality community amenities, incorporate creative design in the layout of buildings, resource conservation area, and circulation, ensure compatibility with surrounding land uses and neighbor character, provide high-quality architecture, and provide greater efficiency in the layout and provisions of roads, utilities, and other infrastructure. And, and I, I think this plan, better than any plan I have ever worked on in the Town of Apex, really hits on each of those key elements of why we have PUDs that exist at all. And that is, we want to be able to use the creative designs that go along with PUDs so that we can get better plans, so that we can get conditions associated with plans that make for a better community, that provide benefits to the public, provide benefits to the area. And we believe, and we're excited to be working on a plan that we think touches a, and really addresses all of those key elements. The first thing I want to note is that the, as, as noted in the staff report, the development is consistent with the town's recommendations from density, from a future land use standpoint. So we're consistent with the land use plan, and we have nothing but neighborhood support for the proposal. You know, we had a neighborhood meeting early in the process. This is back in September of 2019 when we really started this process, and the only feedback we got at that meeting from folks who attended was feedback that was generally positive and encouraging. And I know that there has been some attempt to reach out to the planning board by folks who live in the area who are supportive of what is going on with this development. And so I think maybe, Shelley, did you just hand that off to me?
Sorry, Jason. I, I don't have the ability to do that. It's only letting me hand it off to people.
Okay, that's, that's, that's fine. That's fine. But again, it's, it's a proposal that is consistent with the land use plan and has neighborhood support. It, you know, that, I, we believe that establishes the compatibility with the surrounding land uses in the area that this is going to be located in. Second point I want to make is this proposal is going to bring forward critical town infrastructure. As Shelley mentioned in her presentation, there is the extension of a street-side greenway trail along Hume Olive Road. There's an extension of a greenway from Olive Ridge subdivision to the west of this site, through our site, and ultimately heading back toward Friendship. And then critically, there will be the construction and installation of Horton Ridge Boulevard from its current terminus at Woodbury across that stream. And that's something that we've had to coordinate with the town in terms of just the impacts associated with that, and who's going to be applying. We've really appreciated the collaboration with the transportation folks and making sure that that process works seamlessly. But that Horton Ridge Boulevard extension will ultimately extend all the way over to Friendship Station and provide critical, you know, critical transportation infrastructure through this site to help alleviate traffic burdens on existing roads in that area as of today. The third point I want to make is the parkland dedication. You know, you all see a lot of projects that come through with PUDs, and the greenway and, and, and Parks and Recreation folks will take a look at it and say, okay, we want to fee in, or we want to take a fee in lieu. And that's, you know, that's typically the condition that you see in your staff reports. This is different. And this is a site that's adjacent to a town-planned public park. We worked very closely with the Parks and Recreation staff before this went to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee, to make sure that we came up with a condition that really achieved what the town ultimately wants. And while our plan is to dedicate, because that's what the town staff wants us to do, they want us to dedicate right-of-way instead of paying, excuse me, dedicate parkland instead of paying a fee in lieu, our plan is to do that, our hope is to be able to do that off-site. That, you know, the town is more than happy to accept a portion of this site in satisfaction of those dedication requirements. But I know the folks at MI Homes have been doing everything they can to try to shake loose those really more priority parcels that the town is interested in to the north of the site. And so the conditions associated, or the condition associated with parkland dedication clearly and specifically addresses the flexibility that MI has to be able to help the town achieve their desired outcome there, and that is to get more priority parcels. But at a minimum, we will be dedicating parkland in satisfaction of what the staff was looking for, as well as what the advisory commission has asked for. The fourth point I want to make is the solar energy commitments that are being provided here. As, as was talked about, there's the provision for the model homes to be, you know, to include active solar at the time that the project would go in, and the idea there is to try to create this expectation of, hey, we're going to offer this. We're going to, as we build models, we're going to show you what the model home looks like, and hope that that's something that the, the community will take off on. Additionally, the primary amenity area has active solar at the time of construction. And lastly, the provision of the electric vehicle charging stations within the primary amenity area. Again, we believe that those are, are creative things that you just don't see in a lot of cases that have made their way through. We have an affordable housing commitment that we're very excited about. I've done work with Habitat for Humanity in a number of other places, and was really excited when this opportunity presented itself. We've had a number of great conversations with the folks at Habitat. They're excited. They really like the idea of being able to have a portion of this community kind of embedded into it that is a habitat community. When you drive by, you won't know that there's a habitat community that is nestled in with the remainder of the townhomes within this development. Kind of that, that opportunity to provide for a mixed-income, affordable housing opportunity is, is something that I know the folks at MI Homes are excited about. I know Erica is very, very excited about that. She's done a lot of work, I mean, her prior life as a land use attorney, before she came to this market, she did a lot of work in the Maryland area on affordable housing developments as a land use attorney. And so, you know, it's something that Erica is very, very interested in pursuing, and I know that the conversations we've had with, with Habitat have been very, very positive, and we're excited to be able to offer that condition. I won't bore you with the 12 traffic conditions that have been committed as part of the development, but literally every single condition that was asked for by the staff, and those are on pages five and six of your, of your traffic, or excuse me, your staff report, every single condition that was asked for by the staff through this process, that was recommended by the consultants that were engaged on behalf of the developer, all of those have been incorporated into this proposal with no exception. And because we understand that traffic impacts associated with development, especially in this area, which has been growing fast, that is a very sensitive topic, and MI is happy to be able to accommodate those requests and work and collaborate with the town to address those. And then the last point that I want to make, and this was one that kind of jumped up and it was, caused a little bit of the delay that we had kind of in and around the winter, and that was the Richardson Road mitigation. You know, and, and you all are, are well-versed in the challenges that the town has had in trying to identify land that could satisfy the, the state's requirements for how mitigation land works, essentially making sure it's contiguous, it doesn't, you know, it's not planned for development. There's, I've learned a lot in this process, for better or worse, about how that particular process goes. And we spent months coordinating with the town's transportation staff, Shannon, and a lot of heavy lifting on a presentation that we were fortunate enough to be able to participate in with IRT. And the end result, as was mentioned by Shelley during her presentation, was being able to positively identify 7.9 acres of land that would be dedicated as part of this development. And the state has acknowledged that when that dedication occurs, coupled with a payment that the town would be making to the state of North Carolina, that that will satisfy the requirements for release of the conservation area that's needed to be released in order to facilitate the future Richardson Road extension. So again, that was a learning, learning experience, certainly on my end, as well as Erica's. But again, it was another unique opportunity associated with what otherwise is just a, you know, it's a planned unit development of the Town of Apex, but another unique opportunity to be able to collaborate in a way that brings forward a project that is going to make the community better in this process. And so, you know, those seven points, really the, you know, consistency with the land use plan and the neighborhood support, the critical infrastructure that's going to be built no matter what, the parkland dedication, solar, affordable housing, the traffic conditions, Richardson Road mitigation. I mean, it, we, we are, you can hear it, I'm very excited, I'm very proud to be working on this one because it is real, and I, and I got to give credit to MI and their willingness to be creative and spend the time necessary, that we feel like it really checks all of the marks on what you're looking for out of a planned unit development. And so with that, we, we would respectfully request you all's favorable recommendation on the case. I understand that's not going to happen for a couple of days. I'm here to answer any questions that you might have. And again, Peter and Erica are on the line as well, to the extent you've got technical questions, Peter's going to cover those, obviously, and then Erica can answer any questions you may have related to MI's role in this process. Hi, Mr. Chair, I think you're muted.
Thank you, Jason. Does anybody on the, the board have any questions for either Jason, Erica, or Peter at this time, before we listen to any public comments? Get off easy. Oh, go ahead. Sorry.
I'm sorry. Thank you, Mark. This is Tina. I, I don't have any questions, but I, I want to express appreciation, Mr. Barron, and to MI. I am, as I read through this project, I was incredibly excited about it. I can hear the excitement in your voice, Mr. Barron. I, from, I mean, it does hit all the points that, you know, we consistently hear from our neighbors, that consistently come before this board, whether it's conservation and affordable housing. Very, very excited and hope this is, speaks to things to come. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tina. Anybody else have any questions for the applicant? Shelley, were there any public comments that came in on this case?
None before the due date on Friday. There are a couple that are being recorded to be listened to on Wednesday.
Okay. Thank you, Shelley.
Thank you.
All right. So one last, any other discussion, comments, or questions for the developer? Remember, on Wednesday, we won't have the, anybody, you know, it'll just be discussion at that point, so we need to get our questions answered now. Silence means I guess we're good, so we will get back together and have a motion and vote on Wednesday. And looking at the clock, we are two hours in. I don't know about anybody else, but I think we could maybe use a little stretch and bio-break if we could, maybe have a motion for a, we wanted to say a five-minute recess?
So move.
Okay. Got a motion? Do I have a second?
Yes, Mark Steele, seconds.
Mark Steele, seconds. Okay. Although, I guess we need to do a quick roll call. So Michael Marks, yes. Beth Godfrey. Reggie Skinner.
Yes.
Mark Steele.
Yes.
Tina Sherman.
Yes.
Tommy Pate.
Yes.
Tim Royal.
Yes.
Keith Brazwell.
Yes.
Okay. It's 6:35. Let's, we'll plan on readjourn, or coming back and reconvening at 6:40. We'll see everybody back at 6:40.